I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to regular session of the council in July 2022. We have four councils and no absences. The next item is the agenda and consent agenda. We need a motion or comments and questions from the council before we have a motion. Any questions or comments?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
I'm moved and seconded to approve the agenda for the city council session and the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item will be our department reports that will begin with the Golden Dale Fire Department shootout in Montevideo.
Hi. Just a little report on yesterday for the Fourth of July. We every year have volunteers that go around and patrol the area just watching for fires. We had multiple volunteers out last night. We had a great turnout and we first want to thank the community for the most part. Everyone that we encountered were being safe. They had water, whether buckets or hoses, and were prepared. We did have three fires either found by our volunteers or reported through dispatch. Two of them were due to dry vegetation. One of them, the resident was prepared and upon our arrival, we were dispatched to it. Upon our arrival, he had gotten it out already. A second one was actually spotted by some of our volunteers. It was about a ten by ten and they got it extinguished pretty well. It was right behind Rural Seven's building, so they were able to control that one. The third fire we were dispatched to was a, it was actually dispatched at suspected storage unit on fire. And we arrived on scene and it was actually in their garage and the residents were out lighting fireworks and they were unaware of the fire. From our dispatch time to on scene was under a minute thanks to being out patrolling and watching for fires, and we were able to extinguish it. So it was just miscellaneous household items and it did not involve the structure at all. But had it not been for the citizen that spotted it and called it in and being out patrolling, it could have been, turned into a good, nice fire because it was right up against the wall, but luckily we got it out quickly and it didn't become anything else. So yeah, I think other than that, that's pretty much it. Just still running lots of medical calls and fires and staying busy, preparing for wildland season.
Thank you. I understand the fire trucks cruise around town. I think that is the best reminder any local person would have is to realize the fire trucks are here. I better be doing what I'm supposed to do.
We get a great response from the community for that, you know, stop around, say hi to all the kids and so yeah, we love it. We get a great response doing it, so.
Great for the kids. Next department will be our Golden Dale Police Department.
Okay. Last council meeting, Councilmember, Councilman Steve Johnston wondered the kind of breakdown of what, you know, we've been dealing with at department stuff. So instead of all the, every little thing or something like that, what I've decided to do is this is the NIBR's report. NIBR stands for the National Incident Based Reporting System, which is for the Uniform Crime Reporting Program, which are controlled by the FBI and reported to the FBI. So up in the upper left-hand corner, you'll see a small print of a date. These numbers are as of that date. So basically you can review down through, these are arrests made in 2022 and what we're dealing with most. And the big one is simple assaults is what we're dealing with. So this is just a breakdown of what we do or what we're having problems in and what people, what people are getting charged with. Okay? This necessarily does not mean they were proven guilty. This is just what arrests are made, but this is so far through this year. And I'll do an end of the year report to give you an overall. Any questions on the NIBRs?
Now, this is until six twenty-seven, from January to six twenty-seven.
Twenty twenty-two, correct. And our administrative assistant, Maria Hutchins, she is responsible for reporting the NIBRs. So these are calculated by her from our logbooks, our case logbook.
Now, does this represent all the callouts? I mean, every time you have to dispatch an officer?
No, this is just based on what we're, the most problem here is we're having and what crimes are being committed in here. Because we deal with a lot of various things, whether it be civil problems, which we can't get involved in, or barking dogs, animal complaints, bites, just, we get a gambit of different things that I can break down, but that'll take some time because right now we're over fifteen hundred cases for the year so far and we're halfway through. So there's, there's just so many things we deal with that don't even get a full-blown report because it's, it's nothing we can do with. Like if it's a civil problem, we just documented who made the complaint, right? And if it's civil, which law enforcement cannot get involved, then we close it out, something stuff like that. And we get a lot of those, a whole lot. So I will give an overall breakdown of everything as far as that, at an end-of-year report, if that's okay with the council.
Right, yeah.
And that'll be along with the end-of-the-year NIBRs report.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
So also, as far as the law enforcement side on the fireworks, these are incidents involving fireworks being set off early, not within the time designated by the city ordinance. From June, excuse me, June thirtieth to July fifth, there was eleven complaints and some were just given verbal warnings and there was other ones that we were unable to locate the, the source of where the fireworks were being set off. So it's about fifty-fifties, but we had no problems and we had no repeat violators during those incidents. The bans downtown went, or the ban downtown at the Honky Tonk went very well and there was no noise complaints generated because of the ban. We got the parade on Saturday and the fire department is in the posse, gonna be helping out with that for traffic control. And then earlier last week, I'm sure everybody's aware of it, we had the bear in town at the Golden Arms Department. That was kind of a fiasco a bit. I did a press release, but one thing I want to encourage and open counsel and the people who are listening is these, like I said in my press release, these are unpredictable and very dangerous animals.
Right.
He wasn't trying to hurt anybody or, gee, I don't know, didn't get that close, but it was one, one-and-a-half-year-old bear, I would guess, or something. I don't know a whole lot about him, but he was big enough to ruin your day. So we strongly encourage people, if you encounter a wild animal, don't go near it. It's not worth the picture, it's not worth the video. Take cover, get into safety, watch from your windows. That's the best thing you can do because we did have some citizens that put themselves in harm so they can see where it went or try to get that picture and that's not good. So everything went very well. We were able to get the bear to travel north, excuse me, north out of town. There was no harm done to the bear, no animals or domestic animals or people were harmed in this, so it worked out great. Fish and game responded with a biologist and if the bear were to tree, they were gonna tranquilize it and get it transported back up into the mountain there. But he left on his own accord and hopefully he stays out of town. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for you? Good. We're hearing now from Pat Manon from Public Works.
So primarily the Public Works guys have been working out on Byers Street. We've had to make some modifications out there. The water line was, we knew it was in bad shape, but it's in worse shape than they predicted. They were, as they were taking it down to the subgrade, a lot of the infrastructure started failing, which didn't help with the ground pumping out there, which some of that's naturally occurring, some is caused by the leaking water line. So they, we've made a change where we're, have stopped taking it down to subgrade for the road and now digging in the new water line and going to replace that. We're out there, they're out there daily on water leaks. They've been out there twice a day so far making water leak repairs. So that's really eaten up a lot of their time. With the road pumping going on, we're expecting some over excavation costs coming down the road. We don't know how much that will be because some of that was built into the contract. What we're hoping for is when we get the new water line in place and get that infrastructure in place, that'll give the roads some time to dry out and maybe some of that excavation, over excavation deal will go away. Other than that, wastewater lift station baseball pump has been installed and everything seems to be running smooth there. There's no more cavitation in that pump, so the pump should obviously hold up better now without that cavitation. WASCAC, is that, I might pronounce that as a WASCAC project, sewer project, is that right, Mark, what it's called? WASCAC or WASCAC?
WASCAC.
WASCAC, okay. WASCAC project, we're waiting for estimates to come in. Hopefully we'll get those next week and then we will be proceeding with that project. I'll keep you informed as that stuff comes in. Then we're getting ready to start on our TIB applications and then there's some Public Works Trust Fund money that is available now, actually a big chunk. I think this is the part of the Biden's Build Back Better Plan. I think that's what they're running the funding through is Public Works Trust Fund. We are tending on, trying to use that funding to replace the rest of the AC. It's not grant, it's low interest loan, but the rest, the remaining AC pipe in the system and get it out. That's a lot of the problem we're having up there on Byers Street is when AC pipe gets old, starts to fail, it weeps a lot all the time and that's what's causing a lot of the water problems, we believe, on Byers Street. And along with several service connections going across that run to nowhere, that were just installed at some point in time that we cannot trace because it's not still and no tracer wires were ran in probably the fifties or forties when that was installed. So we will be working on that. Those, those are not due until September, but there's a lot of fun work to do upfront with that process that we will be starting on. And then Andy with the wastewater operator will, starting next Tuesday, will, not tomorrow, but the following Tuesday, will be out for two to three months. He is going in to have surgery to repair his shoulder and then when he comes back, he'll be on light duty for a couple of months, but I think he, he feels comfortable that he can perform the majority of his duties out there on light duty while he's recuperating. But that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, on Byers Street, are they gonna replace the service lines as you go?
That, we're stopping, we're gonna go put all the water line system in and turn it on, onto the new system. So we're running the new main lane all the way, main line all the way through and then all the new service lines and meters will be installed at that time.
Okay.
And then they will come back and take it down the subgrade.
You have other comments or questions? Thank you, Pat. All of you. Thank you. We'll go now to council business. And the first item is the WSU Weather Station land temporary lease agreement. And Pat Manon will give us a report.
Yeah, this is just a temporary lease agreement for them to put a weather station in out there. There's a map here of a little triangle area. They don't really, are not planning on using lighting at all. They only need a thirty-by-three foot area, but they didn't, we didn't have any GPS coordinates. Have you guys looked at the map? It should be in the back here somewhere. I think I thought it was in here. Oh, yeah, it's, it's the last page. You can see the little triangle area. It's on the old side of the, the south side of the old railroad right away. The property is just scab ground. There's never been anything out there, but the lease agreement is, you know, with notice, either party can back out of it under eighty days and the city does have rights to the information and access to the weather station.
How about the general public? Will they have access to that?
That question came up earlier today and that's something I would have to clarify. I'm not sure.
Yeah, so WSU uses the weather stations to run AgriMet, so AgriMet is accessible online by anybody. It's used by a lot of agricultural producers to help with predictions on weather forecasts and existing soil moisture conditions.
Thank you.
So I've moved to authorize the mayor to enter into the WSU Weather Station Temporary License Agreement for the use of a city land to site a weather station.
It's been moved and seconded.
Yeah.
That's quite speedy. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to enter into the WSU Weather Station Temporary License Agreement for the use of a weather station. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is M&amp;M Construction Request for Reassignment and this has to do with the airport project and Pat Manon will also report on that.
So M&amp;M Construction unable to fill their contractual obligations. In pursuit to the contract agreement, the city entered into it, there's a clause in there where the city can, can authorize M&amp;M Construction to reassign that contract. That can, that doesn't change the cost of the project at all and they are requesting to be able to reassign that to Beam Construction and that takes authorization from the city council. We've talked, had legal counsel review this on the reassignment and then we've been in contact with the bond company. I think we still need to have another meeting with the bond company. Is that correct, Larry?
We just need to know, we just need to see a signed payment bond and a performance bond and then they ultimately sign the contract as well.
Beam Construction, you know, has completed all of the documents and submitted it to the city. Our concern about going back out to rebid, we have to spend all that money by next June, is that correct? And by the time we rebid it and they replace their orders, because some of those electrical panels are six months out, or is it, is that, was it six months, was it?
I thought it was like thirteen, fourteen weeks.
It was quite a while and they would have to start or replace any new orders and then that's gonna put us in the winter and spring before we can even start this at that point. So staff kind of recommends proceeding with the reassignment of the contract to beam excavation.
And Beam Excavating is okay with this and they're willing to fund the project?
Yes, they, they've already filled out all the contract documents and have submitted them to, what's his?
Corley, Big Corley.
Yeah, Corley and I think Corley is reviewing them right now. The, the main thing we're pointing on is the, the bond, the interest bond.
What's, what's the connection between Beam Excavating and M&amp;M Construction? They weren't the same or they two different companies?
Well, Beam Construction, the issue, M&amp;M had construction happen with, their issue happened between the years of two thousand sixteen and two thousand nineteen. Beam Construction bought into M&amp;M Construction ownership of it last year and this all came about, they were unaware of it. But he owns Beam Construction, which is a separate company and would like to reassign it over there.
That like the parent, that's the parent company or?
Well, no, he was, had Beam Construction for several years, was his own company and he was working with M&amp;M Construction to buy M&amp;M Construction out and was unaware of the events that happened between two thousand sixteen and nineteen. So, and he's offered to perform the work at the same cost and bid as the M&amp;M did and take over that contract if, if the council authorizes that reassignment.
So the reassignment is just primarily to change names due to transfer of ownership?
Yes.
Right, everything else is the same.
Okay.
So once this bond issue is resolved and Beam Company were able to start this sometime this year?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
I move to authorize M&amp;M Construction and city staff to proceed with the reassignment of the aircraft fueling system, site development and electrical improvements contract to Beam Excavating.
Second. Very good, thank you. Been moved and seconded to authorize M&amp;M Construction and city staff to proceed with the reassignment of the aircraft fueling system, site development and electrical improvement contract to Beam Excavating. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. It's unanimous. The next item is the TIF proposal by FCS Group and Pat Manon will also give that report.
So the city council directed staff to negotiate a tax increment financing proposal assists the city with identifying feasibility of establishment tax increment finance area. Attached is a letter of agreement and a scope of work to develop the feasibility analysis. The fiscal impact would be thirty thousand dollars. I met with the Public Works Committee last Friday and got a majority consensus to bring this forward for city council consideration and potentially approval.
Any comments or questions?
What did we decide on the funding or was the funding gonna come from this?
Well, it'd probably have to come out of the planning budget, which is in your, in your general fund.
Okay.
Because that's what it is. It's, it's planning and design feasibility analysis for a potential project. Potential project may be water sewer related, may be street related, may be environmental related, but the actual study itself would come out in the general fund.
That's right, though. And discussion, did we consider that it could be spread out across some of the different departments?
We did talk about that. Where, what he was getting at potentially, because some of this would be wastewater related, some sewer related and spread the cost out, so it's not a big impact on any particular department. Because if you spread it out, it's pretty minor across enterprise funds and general fund.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay.
Just see what the impact is, let's say yes, but yeah.
Well, what we usually do is if it, if it's a public works administrative function, then we go to our public works percentage, percentage numbers that would be water at forty percent, sewer at thirty percent, streets at like eight, seventeen percent, parks at eighty percent. So it kind of spreads it out. We would use a similar type equation or multiplication factor to spread that cost out amongst the different funds. So we can do that.
Excellent. Matter of feasibility, set a history, really make sure this is all gonna work.
See if it's feasible.
Yes, if it's feasible, then we can do it. Any other questions or comments?
Just a recommendation to council members if I can, is if you go on YouTube and type in the financial increment taxing and there's YouTube and videos on that that are very educational on like a one-on-one, one-on-two type training, they're, they're short, five, ten minutes long and they kind of start simple, explain it and build up. It talks about the pros and cons and things to watch for. It, it was very helpful to me to watch. I actually showed my one this morning and it was very, it helped you.
It was, it really did.
So if you want a better understanding, explanation, I would, it's very educational and helpful.
Any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with FCS Group for tax increment financing feasibility analysis in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with FCS Group for a tax increment financing feasibility analysis in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It's unanimous. Now, the next item, item four in council business, has to do with the Hot Rods Public Property Use Request concerning it being part of the community day celebration. And I think Larry's gonna give us the background on that, I believe.
The Hot Rods has requested that they be allowed to use a portion of the street, the diagonal parking lot in front of their place of business on Main Street. And they had requested that they be allowed to locate that area and to play music outside till midnight. And at previous council, council meeting, they talked about the same type of issue because we were concerned about a citizen concern about, had received a recommendation can be closed down at eleven. So we took it and then we also received an application from the Honky Tonk Bar. And basically, based on that success, we feel like we can thereby approve this request and use that, and use the parking lot area for their outdoor concert, their outdoor band and be able to use it till midnight as long as the music wasn't excessive. And then that would be their responsibility of the police department to monitor that. So we feel like it's a good compromise. We did meet with the concerned party and he felt that that was a good compromise as well. So it's, it's really an administrative function and I just want to let you know that's what we're gonna do, allow them to be open till midnight and I think that that will work for all parties involved and we'll move forward on that. And then let's turn, we'll approve the application, turn it over to the police department, make it monitor for excessive, excessive noise and then shut them down at midnight. So unless there's any questions about that process, then we'll just go ahead and sign that for that. We had some movement between eleven and twelve and we just wanted, just wanted to make sure you knew we had addressed that issue.
Just a question to clarify, because it might go either way, what qualifies as excessive noise? Because we might have somebody that has a legitimate concern four blocks away or somebody that just wants to complain and make excessive noise.
Isn't it generally seventy decibels? Is it generally seventy decibels, hindering?
No, 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 no. Gee, the noise ordinance, first of all, let me clarify too, a lot of people think that there's a time limit on the noise ordinance. Well, I got till ten o'clock to blast my music as loud as I want. No, that don't exist, there's no such animal in our ordinance. It's just any time when there's excessive noise, whether it be engine noise or electronic noise, such as, you know, band equipment, speakers, microphones, microphones, stuff like that, and it bothers a, or disturbs a person with normal sensitivities. And you're talking electronic noise, is anything over that could disrupt a conversation seventy five feet away, is what an ordinance is speaking. So when we're getting complaints of loud music, the officers respond to that area, and they assess if it's, you know, usually we'll park down the blocks from where it's actually is and see if we're hearing it. And if, you know, you hear it over seventy five feet away, yeah, it could be legit. We'll overcontact and say, you know, please turn the music down, you've got a complaint. But when it's, we've got, last year, when like the band was outside and going so late, we had one complaint in the two hundred block of East Main, and another complaint was up on Post. So, yeah, it can get a little excessive. So we just gauge it, we don't respond unless we get a complaint on that. We're not going to be down there saying, oh, I think your music's too loud, you're going to bother somebody downstream. No, we wait till we get a complaint, and then we assess the situation.
And then it's not shut it down, it's turn it down.
Turn it down, correct, correct, correct. So, any questions?
As I understand it, there's two businesses, one will have a band outside and one will have one inside, so we don't have a war of the bands across.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, let's hope it goes that way.
A little competition.
Lauren, I'm sorry.
Oh, one of the, I think, yeah, I think one of the core elements of community days used to be live music on the courthouse lawn. Is that permanently discontinued, or are we going to pick that up again one of these days?
Well, the music is usually associated with the beer garden, and the people that put the beer garden on are no longer a group. What's that?
Oh, who used to put the beer garden on?
J C's.
Oh, J C's.
And that was really, that's really the issue, is a social organization that would pick up the beer garden idea, and that was associated with the entertainment.
So, I couldn't really answer your question.
We do have entertainment. We have entertainment in the afternoon on the hundred block of East Main, and then we have entertainment at night, outside entertainment at Hot Rod, and inside entertainment at Honky Tonk.
See how it goes. I know, I was really pleased with the venue that Honky Tonk did, real pleased with it, because it was, in my opinion, real good music.
Yeah.
And we live over on Northeast High Street, just down from Post. It was, it was real nice being implicit in my backyard and listening to the music. And, no, it was, it was pleasant, it was refreshing, and it wasn't rattling the windows.
I've heard several people compliment that music, that it was something people really seemed to respond to, they enjoyed.
Yeah, it was a good, good band.
I picked you for a gangster, that band.
Not real bad.
Okay. Next item, it's reported all services, city administrator, but we can't, Larry Kelly.
Okay, as we had just discussed, been spending quite a bit of time just doing the last minute coordination and planning for community days. Everything seems to be in order for a great weekend. We actually have quite a few things going on, even at the courthouse lawn, we have the time capsule ceremony, and we have the Indian Village that's going to be constructed. We have bouncy houses, a rock wall, and a basketball hoop type setup, where you shoot the little ball, and it goes through the hoop and feeds it back down to you to shoot again, and all that. And then we have some overflow food vendors down there, and some face painting as well, the Native American, the Native American presentation exhibit will be down there as well. So that'll actually be quite full with activities. And then at the hundred block of East Main, we'll have food vendors, and some retail vendors, and not-for-profit groups down there. And then in the hundred, two hundred block of West Main, we'll have the car show. So it'll be a busy day on Friday, Friday night, which I'll let you talk about in more detail. And then Saturday all day, as long as you want to stay, there'll be food and drink, and some things for the kids to do until at least four or five o'clock anyway. And then the second thing that we, the second thing I wanted to mention was, we attended, Pat and I and Myland actually, attended the public hearing that was put on by the Department of Ecology for the Goldendale Energy Storage Project. And the purpose of the hearing was to hear comments for or against the, that project. And so I did prepare a statement and read it into the record at that committee meeting, and also attended the meeting. And the meeting, I thought, was mostly positive. In fact, I don't think there was a negative word in there.
Yeah, it went off very well.
And that went off very well. And then we thought, we're going to follow it up today with a letter to the Department of Ecology as well, not only my oral statements, but a letter signed by the mayor, talking about the same project. So, that's it for me.
Any state council? Thank you, Larry, thank you. What we get now with city council, and we'll start with Andy, our mayor pro temp.
I just want to thank the Goldendale City Fire Department for their work last night. I think it was great seeing him out there. And I'd like to thank the Goldendale Community Sports for cleaning up Old War Two Park, and all their volunteers, I think that was great that they did that.
Yes, very much.
Just want to acknowledge them. That's it.
Thank you, thank you. Steve?
Do we have another meeting scheduled yet for?
No, I'm waiting for a phone call back from Tim.
Okay.
That was my understanding, we were going to try to schedule something so Tim could be there on the water side.
Yeah, okay, okay. And are we receiving receipts, invoices from the Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, we are, and they're packing.
Detailed?
Yes. And they have the detailed receipts or invoices that were paid, and a listing of what those were, and the cost of each one as well. So, yes, we are doing that.
Good, good, good. And then just one other thing, for the most part, it's real obvious that most, most people in town are taking the weed thing serious, most people. But there are still some hotspots, so to speak. In fact, Northeast High Street, you've got a open, or vacant chunk of ground there on the south side, and then just along the sidewalk, coming up Columbus, and then going down there. That is a, probably the most vulnerable area in town. All that forest, right along the creek there, if a fire got started in there, we wouldn't, well, we'd still have the creek, but we wouldn't have any greenery.
Anything else around.
You know, and I just, I'd like to maybe discuss this in the public works meeting as far as a compromise. I know it's been a contentious issue forever. The city points the fingers at the property owners, and the property owners point the finger at the city, feel like the city should be addressing that right away issue. And while we're, while we're squabbling over this, the town can burn down.
Yeah.
You know, it's, somebody's got to take the lead here. And I'd like to discuss this in committee, and see if we can come up with something to address this. And this year was exceptional in regards to the weather we had, the creative abundance of weeds, similar to like in the winter time, we get that crazy snowfall. And it's, you know, I'm relating that to, it always comes down to cost. Oh, yeah, we've got to pay for this much. Well, you've got to, we've got to look into this, because like you say, the options aren't good. You're playing with fire. And like I say, that would be a disaster to lose that greenery along that creek. And it's just, it's waiting to happen. So, oh.
Just a comment, I'm not sure how many letters the coenforcement just sent out, but I do know several of them. Do you know exactly how many of them were not, that were returned to the city?
Oh, I don't know that number.
Because by our municipal code, we have to send it by registered mail, and there was numerous of them that came back, where people just refused to pick them up, or wrong address, or something. I don't know what the issue was, but several of them came back over the last week and a half. So I don't know, people are just not knowing that the letter's coming and refusing to pick them up, or, so it's kind of frustrating when you're sending out the letters and they're getting returned.
I can understand that, and I can sympathize with it, but an accidental fire doesn't care whether that got whatever in return.
Well, no, I understand that.
That's what I'm getting at, we've got an obvious situation here, regardless of bureaucracy of it, and the politics of it, or whatever. And I really like to address it in that sense, because we're just setting ourselves up.
No, I agree that something needs to be done, but I, I guess we can talk about it in committee when we feel the details are, and how it needs to be done, so.
Personally, I've always felt that the city should carry some responsibility with weeds, weed control on our easements, at least a portion of it. I've always felt that way. And that's the direction I'm going to be coming from, my suggestions. So, you know, just because a property owner wants to be bullheaded, well, all right, what do you do? What do you do? You just keep sending them letters and wait for somebody to set it on fire? You know, it's, to me, it's not making any sense, the way the system's working here. So if we could, discuss it in committee, and maybe bring something back to the council, some kind of a resolution on this, because, I mean, this year's a bad year, every year is, is an issue. Years ago, we had, your grandfather, your granddad had a side cycle, an old fashioned side cycle, and he would go around and take care of.
A lot of it.
Yeah, that's what, that's what needs to be done, you know. It's too late to spray now.
Well, it's never too late, it's too late when the fire comes.
It's too late in the respect that this stuff is this tall, you spray it, kill it, and it's this tall and dead. You just speed it out, that's all. It's got to be cut down, so.
And actually, when you cut it down, you still got that fuel, all that fuel laying on the ground.
You do, you do, yes. You know, it's something, in fact, a lot of people, myself included, have commented, have run up against that this year. Well, when the springtime rolls around, it gets up there a lot like that, and you get out there, because that, well, a little later, it was back. And normally, it doesn't do that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's an exceptional situation, and like I say, to let the bureaucracy stand in our way of addressing this, we need to take the bull by the horns here, bite the bullet on it, because like I say, the option is burn down half the town, or our green space down there along that creek.
Well, maybe I'd like to recommend that we invite Doug and Noah, if it works with their schedule, to be at the meeting.
Yeah, sure.
Have their input in also.
I mean, and I know what I'm saying here is falling on public works, basically, falling on public works, and their hands are full. I understand that, you're sure staff.
There's some options we can talk about in committee that we potentially do. Do you guys want Jeff there as well?
Is there a complaint or something?
Yes, yes, yes. In fact, I would suggest Jeff being involved, included in the ordinance for meetings whenever they have that up.
So, I want to say that, I would, I would suggest, since the same approach is not doing anything, I would suggest looking at the firewise community and making Goldendale a firewise community, there's grants available for that, and there, it's more of a public education forum to quell down fires. There's a whole federal program on it, as opposed to the, you, you offer seeing of sending letters and instilling fear of, there's going to be punishment from code enforcement. Firewise communities, there's, there's an aspect that the city takes, like making firebreaks, and then there's a part of the residents, making your home, and addressing that, making it clean, and addressing that, in that way. And it takes time, and it takes dedication, and most of all, it takes the support of city council for a program like that. But there are grant monies available, and I know DNR was offering grant monies out there this year for such programs, so.
Yes, exactly. DNR has a program, they instituted a program, mostly for rural, the rural landowners.
Yeah, they're very strict.
And, I mean, they're, they're spending a lot of money, they're going in, and they're doing a lot of fire, fire control, or that sort of approach, you know, get rid of the burbles. So, if we can come, if we can, you know, come up with something, and my comments and I, pretty much, I'm not just sad, let's get the ball rolling in that direction. But, that's it, thank you. We go along, along those lines, you know, I was talking about the streets, but the vacant lots and vacant houses, which thank goodness there aren't a lot. Again, I have to commend the majority of the people in town for being on top of this. So, that's it.
There were an awful lot of people mowing their lawns yesterday because they were worried about the fireworks, and I mean, they were really going all over town.
Thanks.
Well, hey, thanks, mayor. Well, let's talk about community days a little bit, and the time capsule. I want to talk about the scavenger hunt that's going to start off for community days on Friday. The scavenger hunt will start at ten AM. You can stop at the library anytime after ten AM to participate in the scavenger hunt. You know, it's not just for kids, adults can participate in it also, but there'll be lots of prizes and giveaways for participating in it. It's a historic scavenger hunt, so you'll be going around to different historical places.
Excellent.
You know, you might be able to stand there just as a.
Piece of history.
But anyway, it's going to be a real good event, so that'll be the first thing to happen for community days, that scavenger hunt, and then we'll announce the winners of the scavenger hunt, and at the time capsule ceremony on the courthouse lawn on Friday. It's Friday at six thirty when that starts. Expecting a real good turnout, we're going to have a nice, a free ice cream social, lots of guest speakers, there might be some celebrities there, if you guys know any celebrities to invite, that would be good.
You'll be invited, me?
Yeah. Anyways, yeah, it's going to be a real fun community days this year, so we're expecting some nice big crowds and lots of fun. Yeah, that's pretty much what I had for, you know, obviously, we've been talking about it for half a year, we're going to be revealing the contents of the time capsule. There's not very many people that know what was in that, we have a nice display all made for it, you know, it'll be a You know, it'll be a big suspenseful moment to see what was in that. So, yes, Roger?
Are you still looking for some items to put in the new time capsule or is that's closed off?
That's closed off now. Yeah, we, we have that thing filled to capacity. It's getting sealed up pretty much as we speak now.
What time does the parade kick off?
The parade on Saturday, 11?
11:00 AM.
Yes, yes. Yep. So, and then obviously, we'll be burying the new time capsule after we reveal the contents of the old one and, oh, we just got a lot of dynamite stuff that's been put in it. There's gonna be some, well, maybe we can talk about the video. We made a video today. Yeah, we made a video that will be on the internet and on YouTube and on the Chamber of Commerce's website, that you'll be able to go on there and look at everything getting placed in the time capsule. We just did that today, a couple hours ago. So that'll be fun, so everybody can see their stuff go into the time capsule. Yeah, that's pretty much it. You know, the only other thing I wanna talk about is, you know, I, I work right by the World War II Park and when I drove by that this morning, when I went to work at, you know, seven in the morning, I'm like, holy cow, what a mess, someone's gotta clean up there. And I was like, the city, I was thinking, man, the city crew isn't gonna be happy to have to clean that huge mess up. And it wasn't just an hour or so later that Josh from the Goldendale Community Sports came in asking me to borrow one of my brooms at the grocery store to, and they had a whole group of kids out there sweeping and cleaning that all up. And, man, that's, that's a good, that's a good way to, you know, get your group, you know? We really appreciate that. I'm sure the city Public Works crew appreciates it too, you know? So, you know, I know there's some people here that are gonna talk on public comment about how loud and how many people there were at that World War II Park and, you know, hopefully, we can come to a resolution to make the neighbors around there, you know, we gotta come up with something, cause I know there's, I was approached by several people that live right around that park and, you know, one, one lady told me that it was so loud sometimes that her car alarm kept going off and, and, you know, I know it's the Fourth of July, but maybe we can think of some kind of, we got, we got a year to talk about it, you know, until next Fourth of July, but hopefully, we can come to some kind of a good compromise on, to be considerate to the neighbors around there. I could understand that, but, man, I really thank people who were cleaning that up this morning. That was, it's always nice to see that kind of thing, you know, people cleaning up after themselves.
Good city pride.
But that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren?
No report.
Actually, yeah. I was down at World War II Park last night, was a little well, but it was a really good time and I was there with Josh this morning, helped clean up, and it was quite, quite a nice turnout. I know there was some negative comments out there, but I think all in all, it was really an awesome event. It was, it was nice. And then to hear from the fire department that there was only three calls, that's amazing. So, and on that, last night, when I was down at the park, I met a lady who made my hoodie. She actually let me purchase her prototype last night and it is in celebration of the Golden Dale Sesquicentennial. And she will have a booth on Main Street this weekend selling some Golden Dale merchandise during Community Days, so it's gonna be nice. Her name was Kendra Blackwell and she has Gorgeous Adventures, so. It's a good time. Looking forward to this weekend.
Thank you.
I know already spoke, but Dave, the scavenger hunt, the winner, what are they gonna do?
Okay. Cause then you brought that up. So, one lucky winner, it's gonna be a kid for this prize, gets to be the mayor for a day. He gets to come down to City Hall, you know, boss Larry around on one of his last days, right? And, you know, we can, maybe we can think of, maybe they can come to the next city council meeting and lead us in the pledge of allegiance or something like that. We could come up with stuff, but, you know, it's gonna be a really cool thing to get, you know, kids potentially excited about, you know, what we do here and, and to learn some things and maybe we can get a picture put in the paper of a, you know, kid down here doing your job for a day. You can take the day off, maybe. Anyway, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that was part of it.
Yes.
All right. Well, the Fourth of July celebration was actually pretty good, you know, had fun out there, around a firecrack, which kind of just gets me wondering, besides, you know, every fifty, hundred years of the capsule and the Fourth of July and Community Days coming in every year, you know, thinking about what makes Golden Dale a place to live and maybe doing some more events or block parties or things like that. I know when the community comes together, it's pretty nice, but it's kind of on rare occasions. So I think we should do a little bit more. I know we have, you know, the different, the one fund for the hotels, and those are for ma- bigger events and bringing people in, but just throwing the idea that we need to do something for the rest of the community, not just bringing in folks in, but, you know, wanting to stay and, and being more involved, you know, I think. And then the other thing is, aside from Golden Dale Place to Live is, I'd like to see something more as to Golden Dale, a place to work, as in public work, as in our own departments and some kind of employee appreciation. We hear that their hard work, the officers, fire department, public works, the staff in the office that put up with all of us here. And what do they get as recognition, you know, there, in, day in, day out? But what keeps them coming, right? So I'd like to see for the departments to do a little bit more on employee recognition and then maybe we can have some presentations here of our council on those employees, because I think they all do a hard work.
Yes, they do.
But you do a harder, you work harder and you know you're recognized for that hard work.
Exactly.
Right? And you're happy to do the job that you're employed for. So I just think that we can do a little bit more, both for our community here, not just bringing in tourism, but our community's doing a block party or more engagement there and then our own employees.
Thank you.
Want help? I don't wanna tell each department how to do it, but I think they can come up with their own, their own way and then the city figuring out what. I know there's such a thing as not giving public funds, gifting public funds, but I think we can come up with a way.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I wanna compliment, first of all, Dave, how much work he's done on Community Days, on the time capsule, and I wanna compliment everybody else that's doing all this volunteer work for putting a Community Days off this weekend. I mean, there's a lot of people involved, the chamber and, well, there's a whole list. I'd just like to compliment all of them and a lot of work's being done and so I think we're obviously gonna be, have a very successful day coming up this, this Saturday, Friday and Saturday. Also, then I wanna relay the message, continuing the written message that Larry mentioned about the Department of Ecology, Public Meeting. This was about the pump storage project. Again, it went up very well, I was very pleased on, on, everybody makes a very good compliments and so I just, I think that meeting went off very well. This is gonna be a big benefit someday, hopefully, for the city of Golden Dale and, and so it went up very good. Anyway, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
The next item is the mayor's report and I'm gonna read the Sesquicentennial, one-hundred-and-fifty Year Celebration Proclamation. It's a challenge on Sesquice.
Good.
Dave and I have had long talks about how to say that. Whereas the townsite of Golden Dale was established, surveyed, planted and named in eighteen seventy-two by John J. Golden, and whereas on November fourteenth, eighteen seventy-nine, Washington's territorial legislature incorporated the city of Golden Dale. Whereas in the year of twenty twenty-two is the Sesquicentennial, the one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the founding of the city of Golden Dale. And whereas the mayor of the city of Golden Dale appointed a time capsule committee to unveil the time capsule during Community Days in twenty twenty-two, that was buried during Community Days in nineteen seventy-two. Is that right?
Yep.
Yes, that's right. In nineteen seventy-two, the one-hundredth anniversary of the establishment of the city of Golden Dale. Whereas the time capsule committee will place memorabilia in the newly designed time capsule and replace it in the, look at that county courthouse lawn. Whereas the time capsule will be set in the ground only to be opened on the, on the city of Golden Dale's bicentennial anniversary, which will occur in twenty seventy-two. You're all invited. Now, therefore, I, Michael Cannon, Mayor of the city of Golden Dale, do hereby proclaim June eighth, twenty twenty-two, to be the city of Golden Dale Sesquicentennial Day and the official start of the Sesquicentennial Community Day Celebration. And I transfer responsibility for the future leaders of Golden Dale to ensure that the capsule we bury now will be opened on June, Gordon, on Golden Dale's two-hundredth year anniversary in twenty seventy-two. And I urge all citizens of this committee to join me in the courthouse lawn on Friday, July eighth, at six thirty PM, to start the Sesquicentennial Community Day Celebration. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Golden Dale to be affixed this eighth day of July, twenty twenty-two. And I'm hoping that we'll all enjoy, I know we'll all enjoy it as citizens, but I hope we'll really make it extra special because it is such a notable time. And we will probably miss the next one, most of us. We'll see. If I make it, you all better really be looking out. Next item on the agenda is the public comments, there's a three-minute limit and if you can come up to the podium and give your name and I just, don't you hear, anybody that's here for a public comment?
No, absolutely, go first. Sir?
He's with the media.
Thank you all for listening to me. My name's Dotte Castle. I live in, on the corner of Chatfield and Allen and just, I also wanna thank the crew that came in and picked up all the stuff out there at the park. When I woke up this morning and looked out there, I was like, oh my gosh. Anyway, we're not gonna let, park there for. My, my question is, and I don't know if I'm coming to the right folks or not, that event has outgrown itself and I think that it, I would really appreciate if you guys would think about moving it someplace else, because it was a huge event last night and there was a lot of traffic and, and a lot of noise and it's just was, it's too big for that park. And if, if it could be moved somewhere else, I would, we would appreciate it. I just brought, they kind of were involuntarily volunteered to come with me and I know that the rest of the people around there, they would probably appreciate it too. I had to incarcerate my dog in her kennel and I had to knock her out. Yeah, we, we did, we all did. There was a lot of people around there that had to sedate their dogs to get them, you know? It was, it was a hard time for kids, dogs and me too. I just had to just knock myself out. I just went to bed. But I'm, I'm all for, you know, celebrating the Fourth of July, but it was a very big event and if we could, I, I told him, I, I'll work with you guys, I wanna work with them and I wanna find someplace else to put the event so that, and it was loud, very loud. So if, if we could do something about moving it someplace else.
I think we can find a solution.
Yeah, that would be wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name is Patty. I bought a house here about four years ago, right across the street from the park. So this is my, it was in August, this is my third or fourth of July, and I've gone out and re-air and sat, brought my chair out and watched it and stuff. And I have a little bit of a different outlook on this. My career, the first six years of it in commercial property management, I was the promotional director and marketing director. And if you're old enough, you may remember fireworks, a big firework display at, in the Dow's, Hermeston, Gresham, Kenbee, many places, that was me. We set up and put on professional, had professional companies come in, did fireworks displays, did set pieces, name the shopping center and all that, and it was, it was a good draw. Fireworks are, they're loud, they're exciting, they're colorful and they draw crap. And the problem that I actually have, because as my career progressed, I've been responsible for a huge number of properties and facilities and one of the biggest things is public safety, you know, maintenance, repair, life of your buildings, that sort of thing. What you have over here that I, that scares me is the house I was built, that I bought, was built in nineteen oh eight. The one next to me is older than that. While I was working for Mercury Development, the receptionist there went on vacation to get away from July fourth. While she was gone, they came back after two days, they got that. Fireworks had gotten into the pine nails on their roof, smoldered and came into flame four days later and burned their house to the ground. And that was in the city of Portland, where you have a big fire department. My concern is that you have a potential for a real big problem. If one of those houses catches on fire and it's windy, there, it's like thunderbox. Yeah, the wood of mine was, you know, it was like nineteen oh eight. The one next door to me is older and so it's, I just see a potential for a real, a disaster, potential disaster. I was wondering why. See, for me, and it was, when I probably do something, I would make an actual event happen. We put it at the fairgrounds or something, make it a, where you've got parking and room and no fire hazards and you could actually have bands and, and, you know, make a profit out of it even. I think the park's great. I think it's better for things like breakfasts or ice cream socials, things that don't involve fire and flames. Just my opinion, something to think about perhaps.
Could I have your last name and address?
Yes, my name's Patricia Shelton. I live on the very corner, the very closest house to the football field, or to the football field, the basketball court, the green one right there. So, open my door and it's, you know, which is offline and I don't expect anyone to care about the dog I rescued here a few months ago that's absolutely so terrified that it didn't matter how much extra shrink melatonin I gave her, I had to put her in a car last night and take her up to the Benson Memorial Park just to get away. It's just, it's a really close environment and this is an old city and it's burned down before. Well, it has.
It has.
And this kinda, I'm telling you, if you have a flat area, I have one flat area on the top of my roof, the rest is pitched, you know, and so I'm not concerned there, but I've been involved with fireworks plays and I know for facts, I've gotten hit twice in the head with cores. When those things go up, when it comes down, it's not cool. It comes down, it is smoking hot red and it will burn whatever it hits. So, you know, just keep that in mind, you've got some time to plan. If I could be of assistance, I'd be happy to, just another perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great suggestion. Anyone else for public work?
Hell, we're for public comment.
My name is Josh Van Horn, I'm actually a member of Golden Dale Community Sports. We're actually one of, we're actually the organization that actually received some donations for fireworks and we decided to light them off down at World War II. We're also the ones that actually, were the first ones there to help clean up this morning too. We do, you know, we, we do encourage, you know, stewardship of, you know, the events that we do, but we had overwhelming support from the community. So I would just like to actually thank Ella Casey for showing. to actually thank Ella Casey for showing up this morning to help, help out, and Dave Jones with the brooms and stuff, and the city for providing the dumpster there so we could throw that away, so.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment, or is there anyone on the line for public comment?
Yes. Please accept my sincere apology if I don't speak English very well, but I would like to share my opinion, my observation in regards to the Fourth of July. Of course, America, we look up to America, I came from a turnwood country, which is so corrupt, that's why when I came here, I'm thinking, oh, I'm America, it's a wonderful place, very honest, of course not. What's going in our politics? But I would tell, safety is very important, and I noticed a lot yesterday, me, I didn't even hear the noise, I'm so tired, I just sleep like a dead. It's my dog, it's my concern yesterday, they keep bugging me because they're just panicking, you know, was panicking actually, of the sound of the, of the, but of course, it's gorgeous. But safety, I agree with Patty, that it's better to always, because I, I work in a ship, and we are, we prioritize safety over there, because if there's a fire, where are you going, jump in the sea, you know? So, I'm thinking of, why not let the fire department be in charge of all those fireworks every Fourth of July, because they can do the precaution of safety, you know, because I watch these kids, oh, my God, that's not safe, using all those dangerous stuff, and kids don't know, they don't know anything, they just have fun, and I think, of course, family involved, it's time for the family to be involved. No, you cannot do that, only pro, the adults, can handle things like that, but I'm thinking, why not let the fire department be involved on doing all those fireworks in Fourth of July? So, it's, and what's so nice about, I was thinking is, if the fire, fire department involved, additional job for you, but actually, it will minimize the, the job for you guys, because you don't need to roam around and check for the people, you know, because the focus will be, okay, we're going to do this Fourth of July celebration in a place not so close where I live, somewhere far, that's like a park, of course, that's a small park, that would be nice, you know, just like what they're saying, because it's a naked flame, once it catch something, it's a, it's a fuel, and it will be a big problem, you know? That's it, my input.
Can I have your name and address?
My name is Lynn Leland, I live at 306 South Chatfield.
Got it.
I'm so close.
Anyone else for public comment? Hearing none, we now need to go to executive session, and we'll have to clear the room. And Larry, do you have an idea how long we will spend, what time it's going to?
Less than half an hour.
Okay, so by...
I've heard that before.
Let's say eight. The executive session won't be until eight forty. Does that all right?
That's it?
That's it, that won't be...